... and generator powering regional businesses, healthcare, military, and educational institutions. The Territory Distributor for Generac Industrial Power. More at baydiesel.com. And from V M D O Architects. Connecting people and places through design since 1976. More on V M D O's designs for educational communities and municipalities can be found at V M D O dot com.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on W V T F Roanoke. W R I Q Charles City, Richmond. W U R V Richmond. W V T U Charlottesville. W V T W Charlottesville. W V T R Marion. W I S C F M Wise. W Q I Q Spotsylvania. W I Q R Lexington. W E H C Emory. W L U R Lexington. And in Richmond on ninety-two point five and Fredericksburg on ninety-four point nine. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Christine Shields' mother suffered from dementia. To be closer to her mom, Christine volunteered to play music in her mother's assisted living facility.
Watching someone decline like that for so long, it was just really hard.
After her mom died.
I'm going to call the Runaway County Planning Commission, public hearing for Tuesday, July the sixth, to order. The first, the first order of business is invocation. And today that invocation will be given by Rick James. It is a longstanding tradition for the Runaway County Planning Commission to offer a prayer or hold a moment of silence, prayer to conduct in public hearings. The goal of the practice is to set the minds of those who are present to a higher purpose and to invite all to reflect upon shared ideals and common ends. We invite county citizens of all faiths who desire to lead such a prayer or moment of silence to please contact the administrative assistant at least two weeks in advance. When no citizen has arranged to lead the invocation, a member of the planning commission in his or her individual capacity will do so. All who are present may choose whether to stand or otherwise participate. So Rick James will lead us, and following that, we'll have the place of allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you so much for the day that you've made. Thank you for the gift of the valley and the quality of the life and the quality of the people. Having just finished Independence Day, thank you for all the public servants that stand guard and watch over us every day so that we can do what it is we do, hopefully to glorify you. Dear Lord, thank you so much as we consider the topics this evening. Give us open ears, open minds, such that we might do what benefits all of those. It's in your name we pray this evening. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered and invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rick. The next order of business is item N, is a public hearing. This public hearing is for proposed amendments to the Runaway County zoning ordinance. So we have several proposed amendments that have been advertised as per state statute. And with that, we will turn it over to, to the county staff.
Philip, if you don't mind, as we start the public hearing, maybe you will mention for those online that we have the ability currently due to the COVID-19 to visit remotely, but that, that is going to go away.
Yeah, I could, you know, for the, since we've had, since COVID's been in place, your public hearings have been advertised and run on RV TV and streamed through the county webpage. This is probably the last meeting that we do that with all the restrictions being lifted by the governor and the state of emergency by the board has been lifted as well. So we'll have more traditional in-person meetings that we've had in the past. So we probably won't be going through this televised event in ten-minute recess period for comments in the future. So I want to kind of go through this presentation. Hopefully it come up. So you all have been working with staff over the past six months. This is kind of a tradition that we do as we continue to look at our ordinances and make adjustments to our ordinance. You know, there are new things that come up on a day-to-day basis, or different interpretations, or technology changes, or there's amendments to the General Assembly that we consider. And so we have this ongoing process of looking at our ordinances and making adjustments. And usually, six months or a year, we bring a package of those amendments to you. So you've been working with us on them for the past six months. There are amendments proposed in all five articles of the zoning ordinance. Those amendments that are proposed are generally to correct inconsistencies or update information. They also would add, revise, or delete definitions, and they would add, revise, and delete regulations. So some of the newly revised and deleted regulations deal with section thirty dash fourteen, which deals with amendments to the ordinance, which is generally the rezoning process. Food processing, height in R three zoning district, some change to our agritourism regulations, home occupations type one and type two, multifamily dwellings, off-street parking and signs. Then we'll talk about the next steps. Also, I will say that the board at the beginning of the year adopted some goals for 2021, and some of that dealt with implementing our reimagined plans that we have adopted, both for the 419 Town Center, for Holland Center, and recently this year, the Oak Grove Center. So a lot of us is trying to start implementing some of those plans. So the first one we'll talk about is amendments to the ordinance. If you all remember back in September of 2019, there were amendments to the special use permit section. And it kind of, kind of came out of result of the lawsuit that we had, and amendments were proposed to change that section. So the proposed amendments are due several things. One, there are minor grammatical changes and changes to outdated provisions. There's a defined set of factors for the staff, the planning commission, and the board to consider in making decisions on applications for zoning ordinance amendments. These factors are mirrored on language taken directly from state code, and Rachel Lauer put the state code there, section. It includes a catch-all factor, which includes any other matter reasonably related to the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice. Again, continuing that there's a defined timeframe for staff to process applications. This mirrors the special use permit process that you have, you know, once the application is submitted, you have ten days, staff has ten days to review it to make sure it is complete. If not, we can then ask for additional information of the applicant, but we have that period. This mirrors the special use permit application process. There's a defined timeline for the planning commission to make a recommendation to the board. That's a hundred days instead of ninety. That's basically adding the ten days that the staff review on top of the ninety gives you the hundred days. Again, this mirrors the special use permit section that we amended a couple of years ago. And then a defined timeline for the board to make a final decision on the application, which is in state code. So it kind of mirrors that as well. So those are the changes to thirty dash fourteen in general. Food processing, so reviewing different proposals that have been submitted over the last couple of years, kind of really found out that we really don't have an item of dealing with food processing in our zoning ordinance. We have meatpacking or related industries. It's really the only use that is located in our ordinance. And so what we are proposing to change is we add a definition for processing or manufacturing because that's really not defined in our ordinance. We amend the industry type one definition to include certain food processing, food processing elements. Again, we researched other localities, and that seemed to make the most sense of that one. We decided to add a definition for slaughterhouse and then delete the definition for meatpacking or related industries to make it more clear. The definition was not a hundred percent clear of what all could be done there or not. And then we amended the I two district by basically replacing where meatpacking and related industries was listed as a by right use, which is only in I two, we just replaced it with slaughterhouse. So that's really the changes that are made for food processing. Regarding height regulations in R three, currently, there is a forty-five feet height limitation, and that's it. In several of our zoning districts, our commercial, industrial, and even our R four district, we have this provision where you can increase the height if it's adjacent to R one or R two, if you increase the setbacks. The rear and side setbacks are increased two feet for every foot that you go in height. So if you wanted to say go to fifty feet, which is five feet above the forty-five, right, that's, that's five feet, you would have to add ten feet to both the side and the rear yard setbacks, whatever they are in R three. And that can continue. So the proposed amendments would allow that to happen adjacent to R one or R two, and you could go up at height by increasing that setback to a maximum height of sixty feet. Where there's not R one or R two, the height limitation would be sixty feet. So those two really deal with R three county-wise. Given the fact that we are trying to look at more dense development in our town centers, we add the provision that in the study areas of 419, Town Center, Holland Center, and Oak Grove, the maximum height is seventy-five feet or sixty-five feet above structured parking, whichever is greater. So this is a kind of a slight change that we made to it, looking at, knowing that, given some of the topography in our study areas, that there may be, you know, some structure parking that's required, and how do we measure from that? And, you know, the definition for building height is it's the average grade around the building to the top of the building or to the midpoint of it, from the eve to, if it's a pitch roof, from the top of the roof to the eve, you take the midpoint between that, and that's kind of the building permit definition. We wanted to give more flexibility to that, allow developers, if they're a developing site, because some structure parking might be totally underground, and therefore, they would choose the seventy-five foot height limitation. Some may be exposed, and then would be calculated towards the building height. Therefore, we wanted to allow some flexibility with the sixty-five feet, so they could take either option they want to utilize in the development of their project, realizing that the cost of structure parking and be able, for them to get the yield that they would need out of their project, to make that financially feasible. Agritourism, so currently, we allow agritourism in all of our ag districts. However, we allow agriculture as a permitted use in our I one and I two zoning districts. And so the proposed amendment would allow agritourism as a by right use in the I one and I two zoning districts, but there will be the use in the design standard that states that the principal use of the property shall be agriculture. So this is not to be, that is the primary use of the property. And we have plenty of property that is owned industrial that is used for agricultural purposes, and there's no other use of that property. So you couldn't have a building and then have agriculture, then have agritourism. It's only if that is the principal use of the property could you use that, use agritourism as a by right use. Home occupations, you know, we had, at our last round of amendments that went through earlier, I think, earlier this year, and we, we dealt with the home beauty and barber salon issue. And so we decided that we needed to go back and look at our home occupations, since that is a home occupation specified, to look at those. And so one of the things that came out into our attention dealt with allowing pet grooming as a home occupation. And we had a discussion and had a, had somebody come and speak to you who wants to do this as a home occupation, has done it in the past at a surrounding locality. And so the, you can, it's allowed as a home occupation provided that you only serve one customer at a time, there is an eight animal per day maximum, and that all the activities take place indoors. For the type one and type two, we already had the ten and twenty-five percent, but you all wanted to be consistent with the home beauty and barber salon by at least having a minimum threshold of two-hundred-and-fifty in type one, which is in residential zone districts, or five-hundred square feet for type two. So they basically get to choose ten percent or two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, whichever is greater for type one. So if you have less than a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house, you'd get the two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. If you have more, then you just take the ten percent. Same thing with type two, you'd have a two-thousand-square-foot house that would be equivalent to the five-hundred square feet, or if you're greater than that, you take the twenty-five percent, which would be greater. In type two, we allow you to do a home occupation in a necessary structure. When we looked at the home beauty barber salon, we also allowed that to be done in a necessary structure. So this amendment would also allow it to happen in type one home occupations as well. And we used to have a variety of different limits on customers and so forth. We removed that from this section, trying to simplify it as well. So those are the changes that were, other than the home, the pet grooming, some of the other ones dealt with, you know, applied arts and lessons and so forth, and we removed those from the ordinance. So multifamily dwellings, so the current density regulations for R three and R four show that in R three, you basically for townhouses and multifamily, they're the same, they're twelve dwelling units per acre. But in R four, there's eighteen for townhouse and twenty-four for apartments, so there is a difference of a six difference differential. We talked about should that be the same in the R three, that you have that six dwelling unit differential for multifamily. And you all agree that that, we should advertise that and move forward. So the proposed amendment would increase the density of multifamily dwellings to eighteen dwelling units per acre in R three. Associated with it, there are changes to the minimum lot sizes that are required under that as well. But in the study areas of 419, Town Center, Holland Center, and Oak Grove Center, we currently have a, we could do fifty percent of a, of the square footage onsite can be devoted to multifamily, and fifty percent has to be non-residential. What we're saying in the study areas is that in C one and C two, that we are increasing that to seventy-five percent. Because if you looked at a lot of the renderings in the initial design concepts, they show at least two, if not three stories of non-commercial use above a resident, or above a commercial ground floor. And so we try to implement our plans. We wanted to make that a by right use versus making them come through a special use permit. So off-street parking, we had a lot of things that dealt with off-street parking. So overall, if we talked to you, our goals were to simplify, update, and provide flexibility on these regulations. And they deal with where parking can be located, the number of parking spaces that would be required, and how we would compute those, and what's the minimum parking required table. We looked at shared parking, we looked at stacking spaces in drive-through facilities, and then landscaping within parking areas, dealing with site distance. So locational parking, this would increase the allowance for off-street, off-site locational parking from five-hundred to seven-hundred-and-fifty feet. It also provides a mechanism for the zoning administrator to increase that distance if sufficient evidence is provided. Again, we're trying to give more flexibility to the zoning administrator. Regarding the number of parking spaces required, we added this computing parking spaces that basically in the town study areas, the 419, Holland, and Oak Grove, you know, the zoning administrator may allow a reduction in the total number of parking spaces if documentation is provided by the applicant. Again, there's several factors to consider, or they could consider, and again, information they would have to provide, adequate information to provide for the reason for that decrease. Minimum parking required table, so in that, we removed uses that had no parking requirement. So we took all that out of that table, and we put that in another location, saying that it would, if it's, if it doesn't have, if it's not listed, there is no requirement. We consolidated uses with similar parking requirements into one, instead of repeating Schedule A or Schedule B, or however many spaces per thousand it was, and it was similar, we just grouped those together. We updated standards, we simplified standards as well, we made everything up per thousand square feet. And then we added uses that had been added to the ordinance but had not been added to the table, and so that's what we did with those uses. For shared parking, we added a notification requirement if a joint use agreement is discontinued. Again, this is typically when you have different land uses trying to occupy the same spaces, but they may use them at different times, and therefore, there might be an agreement between owners of sharing the parking. Removes the parking study requirement in details because it was somewhat dated. We increased the distance where shared parking can be located from five-hundred feet to seven-hundred-and-fifty feet, again, similar to the location of parking, and then gave the zoning administrator the flexibility to increase that if, again, sufficient evidence is presented. We also allow the zoning administrator to reduce the amount of parking required among different land uses if documentation is provided by the applicant, and we moved percentage reductions to required parking for shared parking. Because there were certain calculations that it was these uses would be this percentage, we want to leave that up to applicants to provide the information acceptable to the zoning administrator for them to figure out what that should be. As far as stacking space in drive-through facilities and parking lot landscaping, we have this requirement that requires a bypass lane for a drive-through facility. And so we are removing that requirement. They can obviously put a bypass lane if they want to, but we're not going to have, require them to have to do so. Given stormwater management and trying to give them our limited amount of commercial industrial land, taking up additional land for that bypass lane seems redundant at this point. Again, if they want to do it, they can, but not making it a requirement. We add a site distance requirement for landscaping where two or more miles intersect. Typically, this is in parking lots. Again, this is again, to be safe where people can see traffic coming on and be able to navigate parking lots safely as well. We have this provision between, on, on public roads, that you have the site triangle, so this is also trying to improve the site distance in parking lots. Signs, the last one we'll talk about is there are proposed amendments on how we calculate sign area on corner lots. So this, the provision or proposed amendment would exempt shopping centers exceeding two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet from the requirement that side streets shall only count for fifty percent of the road frontage when calculating sign area. And then if it, if perhaps a shopping center exceeded that two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, or a shopping center exceeding two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet of Rosalia has maximized its signage allocation, that any additional business would be allowed a hundred square feet of attached signage in that instance. So kind of the steps moving forward is, we did have a work session with the board on June twenty-second. This is your public hearing tonight. If you all take action, then July thirteenth, the board supervisor would have a first reading, and then the board would hold a public hearing and second reading of the ordinance on July twenty-seventh. So I'll take any questions that you may have.
I have no questions. I want to thank you for putting it together the way you did. It made it, it made it very simple for us, and I think over the past six months, we've worked diligently on these. And I think we've, we've come up with what is a very good plan. And so I don't, I don't have any problems with what you presented, and I don't have any questions. So does anyone else on the commission?
No, sir, just to echo your comments, we've worked diligently on these for a good period of time, and I think it's appropriate we have a hearing tonight.
Absolutely. I just want to mirror that as well. Sitting here through the hours of conversations that we had dealing with the ordinance, it's just a fraction of the amount of work the staff put into this, so I want to let you all know how much I really appreciate the amount of work that went into this.
Thank you, Philip. So now, we're going to move into the, to the public hearing comment part. And I see there's no one here this evening, but I do want to, no one present that would want to speak, and I have no one signed up to speak. However, I do know that we are on RV TV, and I want to thank you for participating, if you are watching via TV. So we have now heard the staff preparation, or presentation, and so at this point, since we have no speakers, we're going to, to take a ten-minute break. We're going to allow anyone watching. As Philip said, we're, we're going to do that on this one because it was advertised that way because of COVID. The emergency orders have now been lifted, so this will be the last time that we'll be using RV TV and allowing people to, to call in or, or email in. So there is a number, if, if you are watching and you wish to call in, call the number five-four-zero-seven-seven-six-seven-two-seven-eight, or you can email planning@runawaycountyvirginia.gov. So with that, we're going to take a ten-minute.
Mr. Chairman, I might suggest that you officially open the public hearing to receive those comments.
I'm sorry, I thought I said I was going to open the public hearing. I didn't.
You did, sir, thank you.
Okay, all right. So with that, we will publicly open the public hearing, and I'll, so with that, we'll take a ten-minute break, and we'll reconvene in ten minutes. We're going to call back to order after the 10-minute break, so did, did anyone call in or email in?
So, there were no emails that were provided, but there was one phone call, Kristy Gills, who, who was here and had to leave. She had to leave due to a family emergency and wanted to thank the planning commission and staff for all their hard work and consideration towards the dog grooming and home occupation. So, she had to leave, but she wanted to leave that comment.
Okay, so, that's the only person that called in?
That's it.
Okay.
I don't know if the, we're supposed to have this still on, the folks back there, are they back there?
Well, with that, then I'm going to close the public hearing.
I don't know if we were on.
I'm sorry.
I'm sure, looks like we're back online. Maybe we should reiterate that, just for, since we're back on.
The closing of the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing, and so at this time, I'll take questions from, from anyone that, that might have questions for staff. I think we discussed that earlier, but I'm going to open it up again. Any discussion, any comments?
Appreciate Ms. Gills taking time to phone back in her comments. That's all that I've got. Hearing none, if there's no discussion, I would be happy to make a motion that we advance the zoning ordinance amendments as presented this evening and in presentation form, I guess is the way I refer to that and Mr. Thompson.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion on the motion?
No, sir.
If not, can we call for a vote?
Mr. James?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And Mr. Bauer?
Yes. The motion carries. So, with that, we will move on to item N, which is citizen comments, and seeing that there are no citizens here, we'll move on to item O, comments of planning commissioners and planning staff. I have no comments at this time. The comments and questions that I had, I took up in the work session, so does anyone, either one of you have any comments or questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I regret that I was unable to make the, the last meeting, and number one, I hate to miss the meeting, but more importantly, it bothered me that I missed the last meeting that Ms. McCoy was here with county. And having thought about that a little bit, if appropriate, I would like to offer that we consider a proclamation on behalf of the planning commission for her outstanding service to, in particular, not just the county, but also to this body. She did a wonderful job caring for us, keeping us organized, keeping us fed, and if, if so inclined, I would move that we would, would have a proclamation stating such.
How about what we could do is we could have staff draw that up?
Uh huh.
And that way, maybe at a future meeting with all the members present, take that up and vote on it.
I think that would be outstanding.
Okay, so you're going to have someone draw it up and then?
We will get it to you and probably at your August 30th, 31st meeting.
Okay, so that could be something, we'll have her here and present to her.
We will have it available. I don't know if she'll be here. She is a very, just like a lot of attention, and we probably would have done it ahead of time if that was the case, so I think she's very appreciative of it. I just think the type of person Susan is, she, yeah, but we'll see, we could always invite her.
Okay, all right. Okay, any, anything else?
No, sir, that's all.
No, sir.
Kelly, okay. Staff?
One thing, I guess, you know, you talked about the zoning ordinance amendments, and it does take a lot of work. While I'm presenting, I do want to recognize that, you know, Becky James, our zoning administrator, Alyssa Dunbar, Will Crawford, Isaac Henry, and then also Rachel Lauer with the county attorney's office, we're all involved in the research and presentation and discussion, and we had lots of discussion, going back and forth to then help finalize these amendments. And again, over multiple meetings over six months, you know, at least one meeting.